You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
The agenda, we'll call this one B, motion to add discussion of pending tax appeals. And settle for action and discussion of pending tax appeals.
So moved.
To an executive session. Then moved by selectwoman Higgins.
I'll second it.
Seconded by selectwoman Dunbar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Actually, before we go, Trista, just confirming, are you recording the meeting?
Jamie, I wasn't, because BCTV.
Oh, BCTV's here. Yeah, we're good then, we're covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item one, to approve the Board of Selectmen's meetings minutes for November 4th, 2020 and November 18th, 2020.
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, moved by selectman Dunbar, seconded by selectwoman Higgins. Any comments, edits, corrections? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that, remind everybody that this is a Zoom meeting. If you would like to speak to account, use the raise your hand function, you'll be called upon and you have to state your name every time you speak. Okay? Item one B, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending tax appeals?
So moved. Second.
Moved by, again, seconded by Dunbar. We will invite in attorney Paredo into executive session. If every, to selectmen and attorney Paredo, you just wait, I'm going to set up a breakout room. When you're prompted, just join the meeting. It will be in a separate room. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass your names. All right, can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved. Second.
Moved by selectwoman Higgins, seconded by selectwoman Dunbar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the record, we are back in regular session. For the record, no votes were taken while in executive session. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax appeal settlement for Eight Rabbit Abbey Road?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dunbar, seconded by Higgins. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, attorney Paredo. Item two, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that is in the best interest of the town of Branford to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. In furtherance of this resolution, James B. Cosgrove, the first selectman, is duly authorized to enter into and sign said contracts on behalf of the town of Branford. James B. Cosgrove currently holds the office of first selectman and has held this office since November 19th, 2013. The first selectman is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the local, state, or federal government in connection with said contract and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto. This is, resolution is necessary to submit a grant to the DEP. This grant is for the pump-out vessel services that operate through East Shore District Health Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by selectwoman Higgins, seconded by selectwoman Dunbar.
Comment?
Yep.
I'd like to make a comment on this, given the fact that it's about contracting with the DEP. You know, to the first selectman's point that he's been making for the last couple few, several months about this meeting, about 146, I went to it last night along with some other Branford residents, and I was extremely disappointed. I didn't expect a lot, given that Steve Dudley's running it, and I won't get into that, but, you know, if you're going to contract with the DEP, why don't you contract with them to get down there and do what's right on 146, the Medlin Farm and other surrounding property? You've been promising this for as long as I pretty much remember this issue being out there. You said, well, this study is coming along. Well, the study's here. I asked a couple questions of Dudley. He just dismissed them in his usual condescending tone. And you know, what's going to come of this? You're going to just, once again, leave the Medlin family hanging, leave all the property owners hanging, leaving that road down there dangerous. Dangerous. So what do you have to say now, first selectman? Because you've been promising this, and last, last night was no indication that anything is going to get done. But why don't you contract with them to do something right for the first time?
All right, thank you for the comment. And that, that study is due by June 30th of this year, and that is being conducted through our COG. Again, this is for the grant, grant.
No, this is the contract with the DEP, and I'm asking you, as the first selectman of this community, why don't you contract with them to get down there and do what they should have done for eight years? And that's to fix that flooding, fix the road. You heard Dudley last night. He said, well, that's the DEP issue. All right, if it's their issue, well then, as first selectman, why don't you light a fire under them for the first time and get them down there? I mean, how many times we have to ask it?
Okay, thanks for your comment. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to move in second? We've had that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass your names. Thank you. Item three, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following resolution. Resolved that the policies of the town of Branford comply with non-discrimination agreements and warranties of the Connecticut General Statutes 4A 60 and 4A 60A as amended. This resolution is necessary to submit a grant to DEP.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by selectman Dunbar, seconded by selectwoman Higgins. Any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass your names. Item four, Green Years, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Shabat Lupovic for the shoreline, of the shoreline for the placement of a menorah on the town green from December 8th, 2020 to December 20th, 2020.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by selectman Dunbar, seconded by selectwoman Higgins. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass your names. Considering if appropriate, approve a request from Moms Demand Action Connecticut Shoreline for the use of the town green on December.
You can't open it in the morning, it'll be cold, even though it won't be anything in it.
For the use of the town green on December 13th, 2020, from noon to 3:00 PM to hold a holiday gift drive.
Motion. Okay, second.
Okay, moved by selectman Dunbar, seconded by selectwoman Higgins. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass your names. Item five, correspondence. We have one letter. This is from Mr. Wayne Cook. Dear Branford Board of Selectmen, as a lifelong citizen of Branford, I find it insulting and quite frankly embarrassing that I must write to the governor of the state people a letter to restore my First Amendment rights and a fair opportunity to express my views at town meetings. At the next selectmen's meeting, it is asked that the full board weigh in on this unconstitutional policy and vote to overrule the first selectmen's dishonest, self-serving abuse of electronic meetings. There's a photo attached. I'm not sure if it's been photoshopped.
Doesn't matter, because you can't speak unless you give your name, so you can type all the comments you want. Enjoy your evening.
And the letter was to Governor Lamont, because it was your office that ordered the use of such technology. Citizens were instructed by RTM moderator Dennis Flanagan to contact you for guidance on how such First Amendment abuse and censorship, possibly only because of the electronic control of public meetings imposed by the current health crisis can be addressed. On behalf of the citizens of Branford, your prompt attention to such dishonest and unconstitutional behavior by town officials, officials, particularly First Selectman Cosgrove is requested. Sincerely, Wayne Cook.
Comment, please.
So we'll await the governor's response to that?
Comment, please.
Sure.
Well, since you read the letter so distinctly and slowly, I mean, you could have skipped over that any faster if you, you know, next time you read a letter, could you just read it so that people would understand it? But that said, I'll explain what's going on here. What's going on is that I've been complaining for the last two or three months at least, that the first selectman in particular, at these meetings, but other meetings too, is using the power of Zoom technology to mute people, I think, at his own, you know, discretion, because they say things he doesn't want to hear, namely, in this case, myself, and probably just as bad, if not more, you know, more egregious than that, is you don't allow citizens to use screen share. Now, the first selectman knows as well as anybody that I used to come to meetings with lots of posters, and they were very important to make the presentation. But with this pandemic going on, you can't go to meetings, so how are you going to bring posters? And the first selectman says, well, pull them up in front of the computer. Well, that's not going to work. You can barely see me as it is, or it's just the resolution's bad and everything else. So what happened was, I go to the RTM, bring a letter before them, and the ruling, which I guess came from the majority side to the, you know, the moderator Dennis Flanagan said, well, the governor imposed the executive order 9B that we all had to go to, you know, these electronic meetings, ask him what to do. Well, you know, come on, I'm going to the governor of this state to say to him, yes, you tried to, you know, keep us all safe by imposing, you know, not imposing, but, you know, ordering that we go to, you know, remote meetings, electronic meetings, but the first selectman is abusing that by not allowing people to express themselves, but now he's saying it's your fault by imposing these meetings. So I'm asking, forget about you, First Selectman Cosgrove, I'm sorry, but you're a lost cause. But I'm asking second selectman Dunbar and third selectman Higgins to weigh in on this, because despite whatever disagreement you may have with citizens, you should always, always, always ensure their right to speak, and you're not doing it, and you're not doing it fairly. And I'd like to hear what the other two selectmen have to say, please.
Hey, thank you for your comment. If anybody would like to, other selectmen would like to make a comment, but I think the case was just proven that people have a right to speak and they're given their right to speak at the appropriate time.
You must be. I guess, I'm just going to come up with one thing. You know, maybe what we need to do is set some guidelines. I mean, I know the Board of Finance does it. I believe the RTM has time limits and how things will be done. And with all this stuff that's been going on, it's one of the last things I thought that we would have to come up with. And then there also has to be worked in somewhere's reasonableness. So maybe by the next meeting, we can, we can come up with some timeline based on other people, other groups in town, other boards, commissions, and put something out there so that people know, you know, what they have to do and how long they have. I mean, I don't think it should be infinity by any means. People can express themselves. If they have a timeline, they can work on the timeline and work it in within that timeline. I will say that, you know, I spoke to a lot of people, a lot back and forth, but when I start getting called by some state representatives asking me, you know, what's going on, and I try to explain it, it's probably gotten further outside of the line than it needs to be. We can come up with something and hopefully by the next meeting, we can do that. Everybody needs to be able to talk, but it has to be done reasonably, has to be done timely. And I think if we set the guidelines and put them out there, people can adjust and do it. Hopefully, this isn't going to go on much longer. We have vaccines coming and so forth, but during these times and we have this going on, I think we're going to have to come up with something. And I hope that the other two board members will, will help me out in doing this, and then maybe we can settle at least this part of it and not prolong meetings talking about this part and just get into what we have to do.
You know, comment to that, please. This shouldn't be.
Hold on one second, I think. Hold on, wait till you're recognized. Selectwoman Higgins, did you have a comment? I didn't know if you were, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Selectwoman Higgins here. When I have something to say, I will say it at this time. I don't really have anything to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And to both the last several meetings, I think we clearly stated, and I recognize that I didn't state it again at the beginning of this meeting, but I think at the beginning of the meeting, we had stated that public comment would be limited to three minutes. I think that's a reasonable amount of time. If a, if a selectman chooses to engage further in the discussion, I think the others would show that courtesy. That's a common practice. If, if either the other selectman, I think there should be adjustment to that. And again, I welcome their input on that or their thoughts, but I feel that's a reasonable time, and that's the last, go back to last few meetings. That was what was stated at the meetings.
A follow-up to that, please, and to the other, to the other selectmen's comments. First of all, you never put a time limit on anybody before, as I can remember. DeRosa's people tried to do it to me, but you never did. Matter of fact, I remember watching a meeting when the young fellow came in and he spoke for 45 minutes about shell fishing off of the Thimble Islands, and you let him go for 45 minutes. I think it was that topic, and you let him put on maps and stuff, but the minute I get up there, you start talking about town hall corruption and dishonesty and, you know, all that. Well, now I got three minutes. Well, since where, where in all of that does the First Amendment come to play? And you know, and with all respect to, with all respect to, with all respect to third selectman Higgins. Now, she knows how I feel about her, how I felt about her wonderful late husband, but at some point, third selectman, you have to weigh in on. I mean, we're talking First Amendment issue. We're talking 14th Amendment issue. And quite frankly, that's as basic as you get in government, and I'm so happy you're there. I couldn't have been more proud of anyone stepping in the way you did, but you got to weigh in on this, because in this case, I think your running mate is absolutely 1,000% wrong. And I wish you would represent the people in this case, rather than say you don't have an opinion, because I know you too well, Angie. You definitely have an opinion about this. This is wrong.
Okay, thank you.
And if she speaks for herself, if she speaks for herself?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Wayne. I'll take it under advisement.
And I just wanted to be clear, the three-minute, when I stated at the beginning of those last few meetings, and again, the plan I'm carrying that forward, that three minutes is, doesn't, that applies to all citizens' comments, it's not.
May I say one more thing, please?
Sure.
To clarify, this is three minutes per issue, right? Not three minutes in total. I mean, if we have four or five different agenda items that anyone wants to speak on, they have three minutes for each issue. Is that correct?
That's, yes, that's what we've been doing.
Okay, thank you.
In all honesty, in all honesty.
Excuse me, we have another resident I'd like to speak. Nancy Wukowski, just state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Wukowski, and I live naturally in Branford on South Mottaway Street. Just to comment, and I had gone on and Googled and I printed this out, I don't know why all the town meetings don't go by parliamentary procedure, Robert rules, where you do get, you can start with 10 minutes per person and go down. You can make it three minutes if you want. But there's someone now on this call who keeps commenting to everyone derogatory and condescending comments, and I don't think that's right or proper as Robert rules state, even if you're going to speak, there should be no name-calling. There's nicer ways to say things. You don't have to call people names. You could say, well, they did this or that. And, you know, you have to have decorum, and I think if you went by that with every town meeting, not just the selectmen. I know in the Clean Energy Meeting, believe it or not, that's what they go by. Name-calling, you're muted. You're condescending and you go off the topic, you're muted. And like I said, just now this person said they're hiding behind their comments. They don't even have their name listed. I don't think that should be allowed.
Yes.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
One last comment, please. One last comment, please.
Once you're recognized.
Okay.
I just want to thank Ms. Wukowski for her comments, and certainly that's what we're striving for, to maintain decorum. This is a Board of Selectmen's meeting. Mr. Cook, I'll give you one last comment.
All right, fine. Well, on this issue, right, and this correspondence, because I want to speak to other, but to the point being, you know, as first selectman, if you had a citizen, any citizen, come before you and say that your administration is dishonest and corrupt, and they wanted to present evidence as to why that's the case across the board, I tell you one thing, I personally wouldn't be limiting that citizen to three minutes. I want to hear everything that citizen had to say, and then if you can defend it, well, then I think everybody would want you to defend it. But the point is, you can't defend. You couldn't defend those signs that went up last, not last summer, but the summer before. So rather than defend it and say, you know, we're not corrupt, we're not dishonest, we didn't commit fraud, what did you do? You took the signs down. So, you know, let's be really clear about what's going on here. Let's be really clear what's going on here. I mean, the fact of the matter is, you don't take the issues head-on, and your three-minute limitation is all about, just quite frankly, just running away from the truth. But you're not fooling anybody, Jamie. You're not fooling anybody, least of all me.
Okay, thank you. Is there?
Comment?
All right, we're going to move to, is it relevant to court, we actually are.
Other business. Yeah, it's really brief, if I may make a comment.
Listen.
Okay, thank you. Representative Sires, I find a two-tier issue to this. In some of the meetings, it's technical glitches, where if I'm trying really hard and I don't get recognized, that's really frustrating, and I don't know how that could be solved. It's not being ignored. It's just an issue of mute, not mute, and by the time somebody figures it out, the meeting's over and the point doesn't get made. So that's one issue, and it's getting better. So however you're working, it works. But there clearly are different meetings, and I like Nancy Wukowski's comment. I would love to see a universal either three-minute or make a decision, because I go to a lot of meetings and they do shut people down. They, who's keeper of the clock? And you get muted if you don't want to, and there is some very nasty decorum between both sides, the resident as well as the people holding the meeting. So is there a meeting or is there a group Zoom seminar maybe with the meeting heads that we could start having civil meetings with time limits and listening to citizens? I think that would help a lot, because I do notice the meetings are run very different and diversely throughout the town, and you can definitely tell a well-run meeting from a poorly-run meeting, and I think it would make a difference. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Sires, and that is something that they're looking at, or have staff, have committee chairs aware of the rules to conduct a meeting. Okay, we're going to move to item six, other business. Ms. Wukowski, do you have something, or is your hand up from before?
Oh, it must be up from before. Lower hand.
Okay.
Sorry.
No.
Have a comment to other business.
Okay. Say your name.
Wayne Cook. Are you going to allow screen sharing?
No.
Why not? Can I ask you why you don't allow screen sharing?
We're not going to get into having screen shares. We're trying to have an efficient.
It's not cumbersome at all.
If you have something that you would like to share.
I want to talk about, I want to talk about screen sharing. This is other, okay? I want to talk about why you would limit a citizen to just strictly saying something when you can present information that speaks far more eloquently to it, an issue. Why don't you allow screen sharing? I want to hear what the other two selectmen have to say about allowing screen sharing. You know, I have two presentations, two PowerPoint presentations. One's on Costco and all the fraud and corruption there, and one's on the ethical, the need for this Ethics Commission, this town, to be completely revamped because of how unethical, dishonest, and corrupt this administration is. And I want to put this on screen share so people can see visually the issues involved, and you won't allow that. Well, maybe that should go under the ethics problem too, because you won't allow that. Why won't you allow screen share?
So let me be clear, and I stated this before. If there is an item, this is a Board of Selectmen's meeting. If there is an item that the Board is relevant to the Board, and the Board should take action, consider and possibly take action on, then that could be submitted to the Board for our consideration. If there's something that we want to present, like any other agenda item, we would then put it on the agenda. So if there's something that is relevant to this Board for us to consider and take action, then we, as the Board, will decide our agenda.
Okay, I'm saying, I'm saying with all respect, I'm saying that your administration is dishonest and corrupt. You think that's within your purview? You think that's something that you should act on?
Well, I think that's a false statement, so how would I act on a false statement?
Why don't you speak to it and let the people decide whether it's a false statement? And I can prove pretty conclusively, it's far from false. And I like to hear the other two selectmen weigh in on this. If I'm calling the town dishonest and corrupt, and I want to present information in that regard, why would you prevent a citizen from doing that? Why? I mean, I'm calling the town out. I mean, I think this town across the board, not just Costco, many, many, many issues. Don't get me started. Is dishonest and corrupt, forget about unethical. We went way past unethical a while ago. And I like, what the other two, first, the two selectmen have to say, why can't citizens present their information fairly? Why?
I don't have a reason why.
Well, what do you think? Should they be allowed to? Second selectman?
With reasonableness, yes.
Of course. When have I not been reasonable? When? When have you ever heard me say anything one time that was untruthful? Just once?
Well, first of all, the challenge me to ask me that is foolish, because you know I've never said that, so.
No, I know that.
You need, sometimes your presentation needs to be a little calmer, because you're going to get further that way.
Only when.
What I truly believe, listen, let me speak. You asked me to speak, so I will. Yeah, I think citizens, if they want to present something, should have the opportunity to do it with reasonableness. Now, what's reasonableness? I couldn't tell you today what it is, because this is all new. So as I said earlier, for the rest of it, you know, we need to come up with some guidelines to do it. Maybe, maybe you have to ask to get put on the agenda for a specific item, and we get it out there and get it out so all the people see it at one shot, because, let's face it, we could put this on every single meeting, and it's not going to go anywhere if the audience that you're trying to get to, which is, I've seen it, maybe they haven't. So that's the reasonableness of it. And we got to stay on task. I think you'll stick to that. We need to stay on task.
Okay.
Selectmen meetings are not for, you know, let's face it, for one person, two-person. That's why there's got to be time limits, and that's why there's got to be, you know, some type of guidelines to go on, and I'm for that, but right now at this point in time, I don't see it, and I hopefully by the next meeting, we can come up with guidelines so that every citizen has them, not just one. And I think you can accept that.
Of course I can. Two points to your point. One, the only time you ever see me get excited, really, is when people prevent me from my constitutional right. That's the only time. I never get excited over it, like disagreeing with an issue. It's only if you say you can't speak, you can't do that, and I think anybody would get upset about that. So I'm not going to apologize for that for one minute. Secondly, I'm going on record right now and asking this entire Board of Selectmen that I'd like to be put on the agenda item for the unethical, dishonest, and corrupt nature of this government for the next meeting, and I'd like 10 minutes to present a PowerPoint presentation with screen sharing and let the people decide. Let them decide. All right? I'll put it out there.
Once again, if you have a request, submit a formal request. As I stated many times, we're here to run the business of the Board of Selectmen. I ask, what is the actual item to be considered? What is the item before this Board of Selectmen?
I'm saying.
The thing is, please, let me finish. You know, the form, you know, elections have consequences, and as I said, if if the people so choose to have a change in administration, that's their right, and they all exercise that right at the election.
Yeah, well, let me, I got to tell you something about that. Excuse me, Wayne Cook, again, very well, Wayne Cook again, to your points, first selectman. First of all, a lot of dishonest and corrupt people get elected. That doesn't mean you have some kind of mandate to be dishonest and corrupt. And I'm saying right now, if it's not the Board of Selectmen's business to defend themselves when you have a citizen saying that this town is corrupt, well then what is the Board of Selectmen's business? of selectmen's business?
Okay. Thanks for your comment. Any other comment?
What is it? What is it? That's not within your purview?
But I disagree. You're wrong. I defend.
Bring it out. Bring it out. Bring it out.
And bring it. Okay. Hearing none. Need a motion? Oh, I see one more resident. Go ahead, Mr. Petrowski.
Thank you. I just like to weigh in on what's the discussion that's going on here. And I think a lot of this could be avoided if we actually got some answers. And what I mean by that is, you know, Mr. Cook has come to this board in the past months and there's no resolution, anything, nothing gets resolved. It just kind of just, you know, whatever you hear it, but there's no action. You know, we had some petitions that went to the RTM, you know, they kick it around, there's really no action. I think that's why a lot of this is continuous because there's no results anywhere in the town as far as, you know, you guys make a decision or the RTM makes a decision. It seems more it's like how, you know, how can we put this onto the next guy? And that's, and that's how I think most people interpret. And I think that's why we're having a lot of these issues is because we can't get, we can't resolve any. It just kind of keeps getting kicked around and up and down the street and no one could make a decision to pull the trigger to, or do with, you know, however it should be resolved. Like for instance, which I'm sure you're aware of, the Parkside Pod has been going on forever and went to R and O, they didn't know what to do with it, worked on getting it out of there to go somewhere else and went to the full RTM. They referred it over to you guys, still not on the agenda, which is fine. And, you know, I think that's a lot of what these, you know, present, presentations are is you can't get anywhere in this town with, with, with the proper channels. And I think what, and I agree with Mr. Cook with this is there's three of you guys up there and all three of you should be heard and no disrespect to selectwoman Higgins, but since she's been up there and I've been paying attention to these meetings, she really hasn't said a word on anything with the exception of that Mr. Cook's slides are redundant and she's going to look into it. That was four months ago. I haven't heard her say boo about anything. And I think that's where the citizens frustration comes in at, is where we continue to have to badger, almost badger you guys to get answers. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I say one last thing and then I'll just make a quick.
I don't hear him. Can't hear you. Oh, you unmute yourself.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. A lot of people haven't heard this, but I think it's worth repeating and I think it's very appropriate at this time, say this. And if you have heard it, well, I apologize.